Good evening, everybody. Thanks for being here. Everybody will stand for the Pledge of Leashes to the Flag. The Pledge of Leashes to the Flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Apologize for the clock. We have a very active building manager who does a great job. He's so busy that he really didn't have time to set our clock back. But anyhow, it is 6:32 and not 7:32. So first order of business this evening is reading approval of the minutes. Let's see, I've got some other notes here. The workshop, excuse me, dated October 16th, 2023. And that's where Corey Lilly invited the Destinations by Design people to come in and review with council their projected plans for development of not only the outdoor recreation in the city of Beckley, but also downtown city of Beckley. So
Create a brand.
Yeah, and create a brand. And we're still following up on that. So if we have a motion to approve those minutes of the workshop, that would be appreciated.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second to approve the minutes of the workshop of October 16th. All in favor in the cap is saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by a like sign. Motion carries. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Those opposed by. Reading approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting dated October 24th, 2023. If we have a motion to approve those minutes, that would be appreciated.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of October 24th, 2023. All in favor in the cap is saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by a like sign. Thank you. Next, we have reading approval of the minutes from the workshop dated November 7th, 2023, in which Jenna Belcher from NRG RDA was here. We discussed among other things, city manager form of government, and then the potential spec buildings that the city will invest in at Pinecrest Business Industrial Park. So entertain a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second to approve the minutes of the November 7th workshop. All in favor in the cap is saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by a like sign, that motion carries. Next, we have seed a bid for the purchase of two extended cab four-wheel-drive trucks.
Who are these trucks for?
These are for public works. Correct, Billy?
One's for public works, one's for parks.
One for public works and one for parks and recreation. Notice I'm using scissors.
Pam won the boat. Pam was one of the boat.
One of my guys is still driving Billy Cole's Explorer.
They'll wait for Ted.
Maybe Billy always possible.
Maybe gingerbread.
Excuse me, gentlemen. If you will.
Got it. Apologies.
We were waiting.
Okay, we have a bid for two 2024 Nissan Frontier Extended Cabs for a unit price of $36,728.93 for a total price of $73,457.86. And it doesn't distinguish the breakdown between parks and public works. So that's from Lewis Nissan in Beckley. Can't do my Johnny Carson. I gotta open up. Have another bid also from Lewis Nissan. For two 2023 Nissan Rogue's at $31,794.42 each for a total of
That was the next line item there. That's line item number six.
SUVs.
Two SUVs, fire departments.
Oh, okay.
So we just got one bid for each?
Yeah, that's all we got, was one bid for the trucks and one bid for the SUVs.
Okay, my apologies. So these are for two vehicles for the Beckley Fire Department. Again, I apologize. These bids we turn over to two council persons at large. Chief Wills, Billy Trump, Pam Frye for review and possible award at a future council meeting.
And I think Chief Wills indicated that one of those SUVs would be fire-living money?
Okay.
Was it $31,000 each?
$37,944.22, roughly.
Not to jump ahead, but Chief Wills, after 42 years on the Fire Department, has announced that he will be retiring effective December 11th. The one-story career he's had as a firefighter and as a chief and a very vicious I don't want to say fighter, but a vicious fighter to improve our ISO rating, which benefits everybody. And
We're still working on that.
Yeah. Yeah. But you've done
There are more things we have to do.
Yeah, you've done a great job and we certainly all appreciate it. Okay, we're down to number seven. Adoption of a resolution authorizing the city of Beckley to enter into a contract with Motorola Solutions. Mr. Fowles not here tonight. I think Billy's going to handle the reading by title of that resolution.
Yes, sir. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Beckley to enter into a contract with Motorola Solutions Incorporated, Motorola, regarding remote flex server migration. It's Motorola's proposal, the city of Beckley Police Department, to remove to move the Motorola application data and interfaces from the current server to a new server in which Motorola will configure, set up, and install Motorola software and interfaces.
Very good. Thank you, sir. So this is a, as I understand, a five-year agreement?
It's a five-year agreement.
Yeah. And we have Director of IT, Bill Kelly, this evening. Bill, do you want to make any comments on this?
Bill, honest position is that the Motorola Flex system is a county-wide shared system by all public safety entities. It's the CAD system that the 911 Center uses to dispatch. It's the records management system that the Police Department and the Sheriff's Office and some of the smaller agencies use. And it's a system that the Police Department and several other agencies use for mobile data. So it's that combined county-wide system. We've been using for the last five years, and this is just an extension for a maintenance contract, basically. Includes a upgrade into third gear for the system.
Great. Thank you, sir. Any other questions of either Mr. Trump or Mr. Kelly on the resolution? If not, I would accept a a motion to accept the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second to accept the resolution as presented. All in favor indicate say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by a like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, I don't want to preempt a guest this evening. Ron Hedrick. We have number eight on our agenda regarding a contribution to the Beckley Area Foundation Fund, which will be a restricted fund toward building a perpetual perpetual care cemetery for veterans in our area. And I'll have to get this has been kind of an emotional week with all the great things that are going on in salute of our local veterans. And it has it's been a flood of memories for me in a lot of ways. Saturday morning, we had an unbelievable ceremony thanks to Sherry and and Ron at the American Legion Cemetery. Wonderfully attended by young and old people of all ages. And a real salute to our veterans. And Sergeant Fowles isn't here tonight. I don't want to get personal because I always leave things out, but Bill's dad was a commanded a Navy basically small battleship and and transport for those who were going to storm beaches in World War II. And you know, it was never much said about that. But nonetheless, and then Bill's brother Robert was an officer in the Navy. And I'm sure there's other people up here who have relationships who with whom I haven't had the chance to talk with. Then it's pretty cool. Sherry and my wife's uncle, Andy Barbera, was in the in service and part of the air actually gunner in an aircraft that in the same squadron that George H.W. Bush served in. And then Uncle Pat was Pat Miska was in the service for several years in Europe.
He was, in Germany.
Yeah, in Germany. And then my dad was a Master Sergeant in Korea in the early 40s. And my older brother Walt was a enlisted in the service at the height of the Vietnam War in 1966. So and then, and not to belabor this, but I've got a beloved first cousin who died young. Was a veteran of the Korean conflict of World War II. And then at the end of his career in Vietnam. And he is buried in Arlington National Cemetery along with his wife by his side. So we and then early yesterday morning, Eddie Torrico at Golden Corral called me and said, we're going to serve up to 1,500 veterans a free meal this evening. If you want to come out, say a few words and greet the veterans, that would be appreciated. I was more than golly honored to do that. Now I bring these things up to say, and I invite anybody on council who has similar relationships with family or anybody in the in our council chambers this evening who wants to mention a family member or a loved one who served this country. Encourage them to do so, but as I mentioned last night in my brief remarks to the people at Golden Corral, West Virginia per capita has more has a record of more military service men and women than any state in the Union. And that's something to be pretty darn proud of. So I get a little emotional at times thinking about it, but how proud can we be? And it's wonderful. So does anybody else want to say anything? I don't want to
I would just like to honor my father, Chester Bullock. He was in World War II.
Wow.
The Blue Helmet Unit from out of Arizona.
Wonderful. Wow.
My father was shot at the Battle of Saint Lo in France. And spent over a year, once he got stateside back at the Greenbrier, as they put him back together.
Is that was a military hospital at the time, right? Yeah.
My grandfather met with Robert Fow for the first time they met while they shipped off to Europe at Calasenos, met his young men who didn't know each other.
Yeah.
Split pizza, went across, came back and were best men in each other's weddings.
Wow.
When they came back from war. So the stories do touch us all.
They do. Oh, gosh. Any other comments from anybody?
I have something about the cemetery I would like to share. I'd been president of the Historical Society a few years, and the Boy Scouts came to town and they were looking for service projects. And one of the service projects that the Historical Society did was clean tombstones. And it was a two-day event. And one, the focus was Wildwood Cemetery because it was much bigger and it was you know, our local people and it was, it's a cemetery very similar to what the Veteran Cemetery is, where you need people to take care of it. And Wildwood Cemetery does have a fund at the Beckley Area Foundation that they go to and they ask for money, you know, periodically through the summer to cut grass because it's it's a big deal. But one morning, we cleaned all those tombstones over there at the Veteran Cemetery. And it was it was a very moving day. And here's these young boys. There was, I guess there were 20 in a in a group, and we had two groups over there. So there was 40 kids over there cleaning those stones. And you know, they just they they were looking at the ages and what, you know, military part they were in and stuff. And it was, it was real emotional. And I will, I will be a firm supporter of this resolution when we get to the time to vote on it.
Great, Tom. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And this will be my last comment, but growing up with young kids on either Memorial Day or Veterans Day, my parents would disappear early in the morning. And I didn't know what was going on. But they would go to either an official ceremony at the American Legion Cemetery or just a kind of a one-on-one personal remembrance of the significance of that cemetery. And Beckley is, in my opinion, is so lucky. I mean, it's a miniature Arlington, let's face it. Beautiful. Marvel tombstones lined up the way they are. Anyhow, so and I will say, the last thing I'm going to say. I talked to Bill Fow about it today. The Raleigh County Commission has authorized a donation of $3,000 to build toward a perpetual care cemetery for the American Legion Cemetery. So the $3,000 that they committed and what we might contribute will build toward at the Beckley Area Foundation. And Ron and Sherry probably know more about this than I do, but I've been involved in a few other things. At BAF, if you get to that $10,000 mark, it allows you to establish a restrictive fund of $10,000. Well, that $10,000 doesn't pay anything until that fund continues to build. And then the interest and earnings off that fund will go toward making American Legion Cemetery perpetual care cemetery. So with all that said, this motion, this thought is on the agenda. I know in the past we've extended that contribution or a contribution of that nature to something higher. And talking with Bill Fow today, he, his thoughts are that as long as it's not a material change. I mean, we can't award $100,000, Ron. I'm sorry. But if we can increase that $3,000 contribution to help these volunteers get to that $10,000 mark with BAF, I would certainly encourage that if if council is in a mood to do so. So
May I have a question? How could we increase that to 6,000? Would we have to put in? How would we be able to do?
You know, I don't, I don't, you know, again, getting back to my my conversation with Bill Fow, I don't think that would be a material change.
Right.
To go from 3,000 to 6,000. So frankly, I'd be in favor of that, but I don't want to influence council.
Would it, are we needing, are not we, are they needing 10? Is that where they're at?
They need 10.
And they have three.
Right.
Then I would like to put it in a motion that we give 7,000.
And I would second.
And I would agree.
And I have to recuse myself.
Sherry will.
And I think the county should come up with another four to match our seven. Because you can have more than 10.
Yeah.
You're gonna have a lot.
Yeah.
Let me speak. I have been told the county is mulling up in the so I hope that's true.
Well, I would say with that, I mean, if they want to split it, you know, if that, or about, oops, there. If Tolliver would like to split it, let's split it. I mean, that's between, you know, I would say we could go up to seven if the commission wants to split the 10, five each, then let's do that.
You just never know if they want to do it.
Understand.
Yeah, and we have a motion. Thanks to you, we have a motion second on the floor.
I'll leave it at seven.
Seven, which
And if they want to up the ante?
We do need to consult with our money manager. Billy?
I think you would have to amend this one. And then vote on the amendment and then vote on the resolution.
Okay. You know, I thought when Mr. Fow wasn't there tonight, we were rolling right along.
Well, hey.
Okay.
And I would put it in the form of an amendment amendment to amend the three to $7,000.
Which I would also second. Very good. We have a motion second. Billy, the city's okay with that financially?
Yeah, we can handle it.
Good. Have a motion second amend the the agenda item from 3,000 to 7,000. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the amended resolution indicate the saying aye?
Aye.
Well, those opposed by a like sign, that motion carries. Thank you.
We need to vote on it.
Yeah.
Then you have to vote on the resolution.
Okay, all in favor of the amended resolution indicate the saying aye?
You have to have a motion and second. Have a motion. I'll make that motion again.
And I second it again.
There you go. Yeah.
Okay. So we need to vote on the amendment, right?
We just invited on the amendment. Now you need to vote on the amended resolution.
Okay. The amended resolution raises the city's contribution from 3,000 to 7,000. All in favor indicate the saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Very good, Ron.
Okay, looks like we're down to old business. What do we have from any members of council on their old business?
If I can keep my composure. Earlier in the summer, I presented everybody with a letter that I received from a constituent about a traffic signal that they would like to have at Woodrow Wilson. So I did some some I did some inquiring. Woodrow Wilson High School has 109 teachers who go to the school every day. And 247 students have parking passes. Plus, the orthopedic office, Dr. Sadat's office, and all the offices and the businesses that are behind Woodrow Wilson. I did speak with Randall Pack from the Division of Highways, and I've talked to Pam, and that is, you're correct. Stanford Road is not a state-maintained road, but in order to get a traffic signal, if they would see that they would need one, there have to be three boxes checked. You have to have a traffic study. And you have to have two other things which those are things that would be checked off. I do know that those are young drivers. There was, there's a lot of traffic along there. And Chief, there's not a 15 mile an hour speed, school zone through there. It's so strange. When you pull into Woodgrass, there's a small 25 mile an hour over there on the, on the right, but there's no 15 mile an hour. I don't know whether whether that would help. But having said that, being that that's a state-maintained road, could we do a traffic study? Or does that have to come from the state? I know that we did a traffic study on LaRue. Is that something?
The state helped us with that. They actually conducted conducted a traffic study.
Could we do that to see if there's a need?
This has come up before, and I think, you know, there's so many things prior to the exit down to the Seaway that in my mind were necessary, including traffic control at the end of a ballgame, traffic control at the end of events at the auditorium. But it appears I'm not a traffic expert. But I did stay at the Holiday Inn Express last night. But I think that that has really relieved that situation. Now, it's a, it's a Chief Bailey it's a Chief Bailey question. It is, and will be more than happy to contact Department of Highways like we did on LaRue to conduct a traffic survey for volume and speed, et cetera. And that's the proper way to do it. So I think that's a good, a good recommendation on your part. Chief, do you have any comments on that?
No, but I'll look into everything that she's mentioned.
Good.
And I understand that there's, there are going to be times that there's not any traffic coming out of, on Stanford, but and as a matter of fact, there's a nephew that I know that wrecked in the, in the goalie there. On the other side of, remember?
My son, your nephew, my son, Robert, back in the back in the old days during a Summer League basketball game, A.J. Hall was with him. Robbie had only been driving for about a month.
And see, those are young drivers that are going through there. I mean, I just want to do anything that's want to help. I don't want to hinder traffic coming in and out, but I mean, there have, there have been.
Well, it took Robbie a while to get his license. He was actually 28 when he hit that.
So who makes the call to get the traffic study? Is Pam? Do we, that is through City Hall? So we go forward?
I think Billy was involved in that the last time with the LaRue study.
I can contact him if you'd like.
I think that'd be good.
Okay.
Can I make a comment on school zones?
Sure.
On, up at Maxwell Hill on Pinewood Drive, when you come up to the school, that's not a school zone, but it's right beside the playground. And people have asked me several times if that should be a school zone. Because if you're coming in towards the curve, like from Harper Road in that direction, the traffic moves a little quicker. And that's where the buses come out through there. And then there's a walking trail and a fence and all, but there are it's reason for people to slow down. That should be a school zone also. It may have been overlooked for years and years, but
Just like Maxwell Hill is a school zone. Right in front of the schools is a school zone.
Right in front of the school, but on Pinewood also borders the school property.
Where the, where the playground's right there, yeah. Right, yeah.
Thank you. I do have old business, one thing.
Okay, go right ahead.
I would I would like us to entertain another workshop on the fruits of labor lease that we didn't get to to discuss. And also a workshop to discuss more in depth about the city manager's position. Bill Fow did give us some paperwork on that, and I think several others have questions about we handed out, and maybe we need to adjust that in a, you know, a more condensed
I totally agree. Our next council meeting is the 28th. And Billy and I talked today, and it appears that Monday, the 27th, would be a good time for Monday, the 27th, would be a, a good time for a workshop to discuss the items that you brought up for the fruits of labor lease, and the final, you know, question and answer session on city manager form of government. Billy, was one other thing we were going to?
President Copenhagen wanted to talk to council about New River Technical College.
Yeah, President Copenhagen, the CEO of the, Dr. Copenhagen of New River Community Technical College, would like to come by to workshop to talk about what that college is doing at the West Side Airport for an aeronautics division.
Yeah, nothing to break ground, I believe.
Yeah, it's pretty exciting.
Yeah.
So anyhow, yeah, right now, and I was going to mention that, but I hadn't, but right now, that's it for the 27th, so if you can mark your calendars to attend that. Appreciate you bringing that up.
Yes, sir. 5:00, right.
Right. Anything else from any member of council under old business?
Mayor, it might be old and new. I just want to congratulate you on your retirement. You feel like a new person. And I worked with your son at the federal prison, and just like father, like son, very outstanding people. I enjoyed working with him also. And I just want to congratulate Jason Lockhart. I don't know if you all got to go see the West Virginia Story. That was outstanding, the play at the Raleigh Playhouse. That was good. And I was, want to see if we could add the O'Floyd settlement to the workshop to see who would qualify for some of the funding. I don't know if you have a speaker that could come and tell us how to?
We have some ideas, but that is a good point. I mean, council needs to be involved there ultimately, obviously, because if we read the preliminary numbers, Billy, you can correct me, but between the two pots, City of Beckley might be in line for, in the neighborhood of $4 million.
Somewhere in that area, if, if the information we got was correct. And council will have to approve any expenditures. We have, the state auditors already contacted us. We've opened a, a specific account for that money to be deposited in, and any expenditures from that account have to be approved by council.
Do you have any, will they give you any guidelines or criteria?
They, I've seen some guidelines, but they're, they're fairly broad, and we're looking for some more specificity in, in some of the guidelines to help us determine exactly where the money can be spent. I mean, they, they paint with a broad brush on, on this right now, and many times when the first guidelines can come out, they're far from the, the final word on it.
Right. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, good comment. Barbara and I attended the West Virginia Story.
It was good.
And this collective, several people from council were there, or from the city were there, in my opinion, the collective has taken the Raleigh Theater to another level with their technology and, guys, I mean, the stage sets.
Yeah.
Use of the TV. It, I agree with you, it was maybe a little edgy at times, but on the other hand, we're all mature, and, but yeah, I thought it was great. Anything else from any member of council under old business? Anything under new business?
Mayor, it doesn't have to do with city council per se, but this Friday, the 17th, is the United Way Southern West Virginia's Wonderland of Trees Live Auction. And within the city, there are a lot of vetted nonprofits that are under the umbrella of the United Way, and so if anybody, if everybody has an opportunity to go out to the summit and bid on those trees, that would help a lot of causes, so.
I agree, and I don't want to belabor things, but the year before last, I thought I was bidding on the city tree, and the, the bid that was hoped for was $2,000. And I had my punch list there of, when these different bids came up, I thought I was bidding on the city tree, only to find out that I bought a wooden owl for $2,000.
Owl for the greater good.
Which is now housed at, thanks to Billy Trump, it's now housed at the Exhibition Run at the Ray, the Ray Allen Store. But you're right, it's a greater than, Barbara's going to be out of town, so I think I'm just going to make a contribution, keep us all out of trouble as you.
I do, and it's an anecdotal story, but I think that it needs to be repeated, that this summer, when anyone contacted Ron Hedrick, and then Ron contacted me, Ron goes over to mow the cemetery, and there was a woman there, and she was looking at her dad's grave, and she said, "I'm going to move my dad. He can't be here looking like this." So those, that, how many times has that happened, that people have had their loved ones buried there? So now, thank you, everybody, for your contributions, for the city's contribution, because we know that when we're gone, that that's always going to be cared for perpetually, like the Wildwood Cemetery. So that's just a huge move. We can't thank you enough.
I'll go back, it's a miniature Arlington, and I don't know if anybody's ever seen a, an actual designated U.S. National Cemetery, there's one in Grafton, West Virginia, which is beautiful. You know, when Barbara and I were lucky enough to take a trip to Europe seven or eight years ago, we went to National Cemetery south of Florence, Italy, where veterans who died in World War II elected to be interred there, as opposed to being repatriated to the United States. It was very moving. But I think we're lucky enough to have a wonderful cemetery that, over the years, for one reason or another, as you say, maybe hadn't received the honor it deserves, but I'm tickled to death, and I thank council for your kind contribution this evening. Thank you. Anything else under council on the new business?
I have one more thing, I'm sorry.
Sure.
I just wanted to tell Pam, thank you, I thank your staff, community pride, whenever I call down there, they will come and just assist me whenever I call. So I just wanted to tell you thank you for your staff.
Well, I had to thank Pam too, at our last meeting. I was talking to Sherry about my ability to bring a used water heater to the landfill, and Pam overheard me and said, you know, "We do that routinely, because you have scrap metal." So I appreciate the service there that you all, and removed that 15-year-old water heater. So, thank you. Anything else from any member of council on the new business? Public comments? Okay, let's see, we got Mary West. Hi, Mary.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to talk to you all, do you want to talk about veterans too, because I'm also a veteran. My husband's son, and you're still serving. But now, I hope and pray that you all can do something for LaRue. Those trees, I have paid $300 to break leaves, and I'm sick of looking at leaves, because those are not my trees. I paid to get the trees down on, behind my home, but I still get all the leaves from next door and everywhere else. And those trees, that's the only section that's not cleared in that alleyway. And another thing, the traffic is still crazy down there. And we're getting darker now, so your study told you, oh, most of the speeding was at 12 to 2:00 in the morning? Well, it's getting darker out there early, and it's still speeding, and it's crazy down there. You can't even walk out your driveway without almost getting hit. And Chief, I haven't seen any of my friends down there watching over me. Please send them down. I would appreciate it, any help we can get down there, because it's getting to be rough. It, you know, it really is, and it, I don't know whether the state did a study just down to Eisenhower, because I can't see how they did all that paperwork and got it cleared with how many cars is coming on LaRue, because that's all I see all day and all night. And if, if you want to look at my cameras, they, they record darn near, they record it coming through there, and there's so many cars. So if we can get some help, please, please, send some help down there. And then you might not see me as often, so, okay, if you help me, I might cycle, but thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mary.
If I may ask her just a real quick question, I thought leaf pickup was, Mary mentioned the leaves, I thought leaf pick was November 13th.
Yeah.
Okay, because, well, I mean, when I ran through Ward 3 this morning for my jog the day before, Canal Street, you can't get to the sidewalks on the left side of the canal, all the way up town, like if there's.
We started in.
Okay, that explains it, because I've been.
We moved into Ward 4 after that.
Okay.
I almost picked up today in Ward 2.
All right, well, it was a 5:00 AM run, but there's no way to traverse the sidewalks in a bunch of areas, so that explains it. Sorry to take that out of order, sorry, man.
No problem, no problem at all.
Just trying to let us know that you run at 5:00 AM.
Yeah, I'm just trying to let you people hear, you're slacking.
Yeah.
No, but it's dangerous, like, up in the road, it's not good.
Okay, next, Michael Enrique Smith.
Hold on, how much does?
3 minutes, sir.
Yes, sir. Ready? I might hit you. Sorry. Long story short, I used to live on Stanford Road, and now I don't. I live on Woodlong Avenue, and it's about to fall in, because there's water pumping out of the ground, okay? It's been coming out of the ground for a very long time, I don't know where it's coming from. If it's a spring, I suggest we cap it, because we're not getting the snow we used to, and the springs are going to dry up eventually. Maybe. So there are three basic parcels that are affected right now, besides the one I'm living in, 303. I have the parcels here, who I, what I give the evidence to, as far as water coming out of the ground, it shouldn't be coming out of the ground. There's more than one place, and I'm actually documenting every one I've found so far. I found three places where there's water. Where's it coming from? I don't know, but it's flowing. Some, it looks like there's springs. So who would want to know about these parcels where there's water coming out of the ground? It's actually taking the, the dirt along with it. There's only one tree holding up this one hill, and my ex-wife, who, you know, walked there, I was showing her apartment, she was like, "That's a hole, you know, that's a sinkhole." She may be right. If that hill falls, where the, you got the sidewalk there, it's all falling in, if that hill falls, it's going to take the gas thing, the gas building right there with it. Now, when is it going to happen? Heavy rain? I don't know, okay? But it's dangerous, and it's damaging, and you told me about the, the fact that when I called you, and thank you for that conversation, it was great, okay? You told me that the residents are responsible for the sidewalks? Is that correct? For maintenance of the sidewalk?
Yes.
Well, on this road, on most roads in Beckley, the sidewalks are not being maintained. So either that system needs to change, or the residents need to be told, and code enforcement needs to knock on their door and say, "Maintain your sidewalk." I'm, I'm a law enforcement guy, and for me, enforcement is everything, okay? What's being enforced and what's not being enforced under code enforcement, okay? I had a buddy of mine said, "They gave him a hard time for putting a tarup on his roof to keep out the rain, but then I look at the pagoda as I walk by, sir." Gentlemen, ladies, I walk by the pagoda, I'm like, "What's going on? Why aren't we talking to them?" I called the Realtor. I said, "Sir, who owns this? Can they fix it? Board up the doors where the homeless people are getting in." Okay? He gets, "Uh, whatever." Okay? There are Realtors in the city that can't sell property, because their property's right next to an eyesore. Okay? So those properties that are in eyesore, code enforcement should enforce it, and whoever owns it should fix it. Yes or no?
They do.
Okay, so, does anybody want these parcels? I mean, I could write these people.
15 more seconds.
I got the addresses here.
You have 15 seconds, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much for my time, for taking my time, I'm sorry, thank you very much for giving me your time, and I'll be back, because I believe you have more work to do, sir. And if you're not going to do it, I'm going to run for mayor, and I'll do it. And that's all I have to say, sir.
You got my vote. Thank you. Ron Hedrick.
First of all, I'd like to say, wow, I'm blown away. Had the same experience when I went for the county commission last week. I asked for $1,000 to kick us off, and they gave me 3. So you guys, you know, you, you just blew that away. And I really thank you. This, but this money is for the future. It's, I wish the American Legions would have done this years ago, so as they've aged, and when they got to where they physically can't take care of it now, it would be taking care of itself. But instead of waiting until I can't do it, let's, I'd rather start it now, and as long as, you know, good Lord lets me live here, I'm going to take care of it and make sure it never gets to that condition again. And then hopefully, when I'm finished, this fund will take care of it. So it's very important that we start it now, and let it grow, and get as big as some, you know, it can be, so it can take care of it for our grandchildren and their kids forever. And it is like, it is a monument. It is a monument to the city, to the county, to the state. And I've been to a lot of the same ones you've taught, Grafton up there, they have the first, I believe, the, the old part of Grafton, downtown Grafton, they have actually two national cemeteries up there in Grafton. They have the big one out in the country that's beautiful, in rolling hills, but in town, if you really want to see history, that's where the real one is. It's, they got the first Civil War casualty buried there, I believe it is. And what do we have here? We have the first casualty of the Korean War buried here, of all the U.S. soldiers. So you, you never know where you're going to find something like that, but it is a treasure. And I, and I pledge that we will keep it and upkeep it, and I've got plans to make it better, make improvements, and Sherry's right about the lady that, that said she was going to move her father. She also came back later and said they were also, her brother's there also, and they were going to move him also. So it was actually two they were going to move. And, and I was out there cutting grass when elderly were showing up to visit their husbands and stuff, and they were having a hard time getting in, because of the steps are sloped and sinking, and there's no handrails, and I was asked, "Could anyone please put handrails up?" So bringing the cemetery up to a standard is my first priority. You guys made this fundraising for this, this, this perpetual fund, you know, so much easier. And, and for me, asking for help is one of the hardest things that I have to do, because it's not in my nature. So you guys, I really thanks, thank you for making it easy for me, and I just couldn't be any happier. And I want to thank the newspapers and the news, they, they got the story out, and if you weren't there Saturday, you really missed something special, because I was shit, I was, didn't know what to expect. I was there at 7:00 in the morning, getting everything ready, and, and, and we were going to start at 8:30, and about 8:15, it's like someone opened up the skies, and a line of cars were coming, fire trucks were pulling up, people were getting, coming, walking up, and we had.
15 seconds.
Community there, we had Girl Scouts there, we, it was, it was amazing. And then we couldn't ask for the National Band to be there, playing songs for us, for the Salvation Army National Band. I mean, it, it was a blessed morning, and, and I'd like to make that an annual thing, but, but again, I thank the City of Beckley and the citizens for everything they do.
Thanks, Ron. And I will say, an absolutely beautiful morning. It was chilly to start with, but as Ron said, as the sun came out and the fog burned off, and then I can't say enough about this Salvation Army ensemble of, what, 7 or 8 people? Ron?
Yeah, they, they're a small group, and, and if you didn't see them at the parade, wow. The Marxists band was awesome. And then later that night, I drove down to the Green Bar for their concert. I mean, I, I think the word should have got out more, because people didn't drive down there for that free concert, really missed something.
I agree, and they had the full 30, as I understand, 30 members.
It was.
Yeah. We were with them Friday evening at the Salvation Army Appreciation. And I can't believe, can't believe the sound that came from, in this case, 7 or 8 people with brass instruments, but it was amazing. So again, congratulations on a wonderful event, and like you, my hope would be that it would continue every year and continue to grow, because it's, it's pretty amazing.
Well, it's a great way to start a better statement.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
Ron, you mentioned that correctly, it's perpetual fund for the cemetery. It's, the cemetery's not going to be a perpetual cemetery, correct?
Perpetual care.
Care.
In other words, they don't have to raise the money year in and year In other words, they don't have to raise the money year in and year out to keep it going like, uh, a lot of cemeteries have to do.
Yeah.
It is perpetual care.
But you're going to have to have more money than ten thousand dollars for this to happen, you're going to have to-
Right, I'm hoping in twenty years, when I'm maybe there, so, the, the fund will take care of the cemetery.
Right, correct. The ten thousand dollars just establishes, uh, the fund of BAF, uh, designated, but the, the, day one, funds won't be available for what we're talking about, for perpetual care. As more people contribute to the ten thousand dollar fund, which is already in place, thanks to council this evening, then the interest going forward from, from those funds will, will take care of it.
Right.
And as it grows and grows.
And I hope to grow the American Legion with younger soldiers, veterans, because they're, that, that's, that's the root of the call, of the problem, is the American Legion Cemetery is, was to be maintained by the American Legion, and as the membership aged and no one joined, they, they were, aren't able to. So, I joined last week, and so I'm hoping to bring more people of my age, younger, to join, and, and, you know, that fund won't be touched for years, but if we can get the American Legion of, and, and that's just another, you know, the American Legion's been part of Beckley for a long time.
Absolutely.
It's also, you know, good to have-
I just didn't want Josie to, to mistake that.
Yeah. Well, post thirty-two, used to have a great baseball team also, in the American Legion League, that played at, well, it was in the old Dust Bowl, but there are a lot of Beckley athletes that flourished in, uh, with, with post thirty-two as baseball players.
Well, if you go in there and see that wall of ex-commanders that go all the way back to black and white pitchers and stuff, and people wearing military uniforms, just to see that wall, the history of the local people that were, whether they were politicians or local leaders and stuff, to see that wall of all those commanders is the history of, you know, part of the Beckley's history, and to, to save that post is important, because frankly, towns are losing their American Legions, their VFWs, their MOOCs, their, their Lions Clubs. All these clubs are fading away because we can't get the young people, the twenties, thirties, and forties to join these clubs, and that's, that's, that's a shame, because those organizations added, and add so much to our communities.
Well, you're exactly right, not to belabor the, the topic, but going out, uh, as an honor and a privilege last night to say a few words at, at Golden Corral, the age of those fourteen or fifteen hundred veterans who were there for a meal astounded me, that they, they were so old. I mean, really, uh, very, so you're right, we need, you need, uh, to, you know, recruit more young people. I don't know what the solution is, but, uh, I certainly hope you're successful. Anything else for the good? Oh, let's see, is Anthony here? Do we have, uh, anybody, or Amy? That's not Anthony, that's Amy. Okay.
We have a few online, but no one's had a good ear.
If anybody would like to participate in public, public comments, uh, if calling in by phone, dial star three to raise your hand to be, uh, recognized and speak. If you're con, uh, connected by your computer, click the hand icon on your participants' panel. Nobody? Okay, do we have motion to adjourn? Very good, thanks, everybody.